Joy Ann, we lost Joy Ann.
She was here last week.
Yeah. Saw that art, cultural arts, you know, she's on the arts. Oh, you know where she is? She's at that opening for the On The Go. I'll be maybe, you know, the Center for the Arts.
Could be. That would make sense.
Oh, we're fine.
Welcome. This is the regular meeting of the Grass Valley City Council, Capital Improvement Authority, and Redevelopment Successor Agency, 7:00 PM Tuesday, June 26th. And we'd like to remind you that the City Council really welcomes you to these meetings, which are scheduled 7:00 PM on the second, fourth Tuesdays of each month. Your interest is encouraged and appreciated. This meeting is broadcast live on Camcast Channel 17, and meeting is being recorded by NCTV and is scheduled for rebroadcast on their station. Please consult your NCTV program. In addition to being broadcast live on TV, it is also being broadcast live on the Internet at thecityofgrassvalley.com. And you look at for meetings on video, City Council. This meeting is also recorded on audiotape. Council chambers are wheelchair accessible and listening devices are available. Actually, very good listening devices are available. Other special accommodations may be requested, but to the city clerk 72 hours in advance of the meeting. Action may be taken on any agenda item. Please turn off all cell phones or similar devices. Agenda item materials are available at City Hall, City Public Library, or the city's website by clicking on the PDF icon. Staff reports and background information related to regular agenda items are available at City of Grass Valley at City Hall. Materials related to an item on this agenda submitted to the council after distribution of the agenda packet are available for public inspection in the city clerk's office at City Hall. During normal business hours, such documents are also available on the City of Grass Valley website at www.cityofgrassvalley.com, subject to the city staff's ability to post the documents before the meeting. So I now call the meeting to order. Fledge of Allegiance, and so Bob, would you, would you, would you mind doing the pledge of allegiance for us again? Bob?
Yeah. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Kristi.
Councilmember Aguilar?
Yes.
Councilmember Arbuckle?
Yes.
Councilmember Foyer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Swarthout?
Yes.
Mayor Levine?
Yes, present.
Members present tonight.
Agenda approval. The City Council reserves right to hear items in a different order in order to accomplish business in the most efficient manner. Are there any changes to the agenda? Miss?
One change that we would actually like to hear item 14 and 15 as one item, and then we'll do two separate motions.
Okay. Any changes here? Okay. There is nothing to report out of closed-door session tonight, and introductions and presentations, there are none this evening. Public comment, there is a time limitation of three minutes per person. For any items that are not on the agenda and within the jurisdiction or interest of the city, please come to the podium at this time and speak into the microphone. If you wish to speak regarding a scheduled item, please come to the podium when the item number and subject matter are announced and speak into the microphone. When recognized, please begin by providing your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to submit written information at the meeting needs to furnish 10 copies to the city clerk in advance to allow for distribution to the city council, staff, and the media. So this is public comment. And any public comment?
Matthew Coulter, Grass Valley. The Memorial Park project that's going on for both the pickleball court and playground creating a lot of dust, it'd be great if the project over there could mitigate that in some way. As well as Memorial Park Pool, it's in really bad shape, needs some TLC, and that's been asked to me to ask to you by a lifeguard there. The Brownfield Meeting Site that's going to happen here tomorrow, it would have been nice to schedule it so the Nevada City folks could be at the meeting as well. The corner of Ofer and Colfax Highway, the lines are completely worn off the road, and that sweeping corner on Colfax Highway is very dangerous to try to make a left onto Ofer to try to get up to Bennett, because the line is completely off the, off the road at this point. And some folks I met upstairs asked me to ask you folks about the Bennett Street Wall. The old train yard is in really, really bad shape, and they were hoping something could be done with it before it completely fails. And that's it. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment, please?
Morning, Marshall. Echo Ridge Drive in Nevada City, and I'm here on behalf of the Grass Valley Downtown Association to let you guys know that Thursday Night Market starts this Thursday. It's from 6:00 to 9:00, and it'll be on Mill and Main Streets, and we want to thank the city for their support of this event. We are still looking for some volunteers, so if anybody wants to be involved with the Grass Valley Downtown Association, you can call us at (530) 272-8315. And all of our events are at www.downtowngrassvalley. Also, next week, we have our Fourth of July Celebration, which is a collaboration between Nevada City and Grass Valley Chambers and the Grass Valley Downtown Association. So we are also looking for volunteers for that event. And the parade's in Nevada City, but the whole celebration is at the fairgrounds, and it's going to be a lot of fun, both these events, a lot of fun with entertainment, dancing, and vendors. So just come on down. That's it.
Any other public comment? Not seeing anybody. I will close the public comment opportunity. Consent items. All matters listed under the consent calendar are to be considered routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless, before the City Council votes on the motion to adopt, members of council, staff, or public request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate discussion and roll call vote. Any changes? None from the council? Staff?
Staff.
Okay. Public? Yes, sir? Okay. Thank you. Is there a mo, would?
I make a motion that we approve the consent calendar with those 3, 4, 6, and 9 following up as item G.
Second.
Kristi, please do roll call.
For Aguilar?
Yes.
Councilmember Arbuckle?
Yes.
Councilmember Foyer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Swarthout?
Yes.
Mayor Levine?
Yes, thank you.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay. Mr. Coulter, do you have questions regarding those items? Or comments?
Yeah, on the laboratory testing of our water, water treatment plant, I was wondering why we can't get a more local company to do that, that we have to hire people from Ukiah to come down and pay that drive time and all that.
Because I own the local water company, local lab testing company.
And that's the only one?
Yep.
So, okay. Conflict of interest, that makes sense. On four, I would really hope that we don't demolish that house. I consider every house at this point in Grass Valley historical. Not necessarily the ones that have been built in the last 10 years, but a little bit farther back. I understand that the owner of that house has, since the request has gone in, has passed away. And if there's some way that we could, again, save a historic house in Grass Valley from the demolition, it's probably one of the last ones left that is even being considered for that. All the other ones have been bought up and have been being nicely remodeled on Mill Street and other places, places that we thought were teardowns are, will be now duplexes, the majority of them. They're all being made into duplexes. So that's on the number four. I'm hoping that can go to more of a city informational thing about being able to, you know, keep what few houses we have left instead of tearing them down. On number six, the grand jury report, on that, and my comment on that, I find the most dangerous thing on a daily basis, dropping and picking up, is the schools. I find that somebody will probably be killed in that process, far more likely than a school shooter. Nevada Union is insanity up there. I know they're making some improvements that'll help, but even the charter school over here, it's just out of control, and something really needs to be done about it for this next school year. And on number nine, on the allocation request for the pedestrian project, Wolf Creek Trail Project, my question is, is there an actual map that shows a connection of a trail from one, from point A to point B of Wolf Creek, or is it only small sections that aren't connected? Is there some kind of a plan, actually, for that project? Because I keep seeing money coming for Wolf Creek Trail Project, but I don't quite understand where it's going to go, or how it's going to go, or, yeah, what the big picture is for that. I did it one time when it seemed to be the consensus coming out of Loma Rica and all the way down, but now I know that's changed. Can I get answers to any of these questions, or do I just get to ask a question and then not?
Thank you for your questions.
Okay. No one wrote anything down, so am I going to get any answers?
I got an answer to the water. I wrote everyone down. Thank you.
So I make a motion that we approve item 3, 4, 6, and 9.
Second.
Kristi, roll call, please.
Councilmember Aguilar?
Yes.
Councilmember Arbuckle?
Yes.
Councilmember Foyer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Swarthout?
Yes.
Mayor Levine?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay. Public hearings, adopt 10 resolutions confirming diagram and assessment, leveling the assessment, and requesting the county auditor to place assessment on tax roll for fiscal year 2018-19, landscaping and lighting districts, LLD and benefit assessment districts, AD. And follow that, and we're allowed to do them all because the law changed, and we don't have to recuse ourselves if we live in a district. So with that, we've had this on the agenda for the last couple of meetings and going through the districts, and this is an annual event, so. This is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing on this. Ow, I'm sorry. How'd you sneak down there? That was so good.
I don't know. I thought, wow.
Oh, my goodness. I apologize.
I just want to say good evening, Mayor Levine, city council members. For the record, I'm Mary Ann Hoffler, and I'm a general ledger accountant with the Finance Department. Tonight, this is the third and final step to put these assessments on the tax rolls. Costs of assessment are in the engineering reports, where prior city council meetings directed the filing of these reports and the intention to order the improvements. The increase from the prior year represents a 3.1 Consumer Price Index for Pacific Cities West for February of 2018. These assessment costs cover costs of landscaping, lighting, and drainage maintenance, and all five districts, like Howard said, are included in one public hearing tonight. Some of these districts do include multiple landscape and lighting districts. Total placement, again, is up due to the 3.1% increase for CPI. The total number of parcels impacted are 703. This has been posted numerous meetings without a single question, so. Open public hearing and see if there's any questions now. Okay.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Anybody who has any questions regarding the landing and lighting and landscaping districts as we do annually, please come to the podium. Rush, I guess none, it's closed public hearing, and the next part of that is, do you have any, any questions of staff? Okay, motion?
I'd like a motion that we adopt 10 resolutions confirming diagram and assessments or levying assessments, and request the county auditor to place the assessments on the tax roll for 2018, 2019. Second.
I don't know. I think we do this every year, but I'm going to ask because it's a money thing that you do, roll call. I don't, yeah.
Councilmember Aguilar?
Yes.
Councilmember Arbuckle?
Yes.
Councilmember Foyer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Swarthout?
Yes.
Mayor Levine?
Yes, thank you.
Motion carries 5-0.
We're combining 14 and 15. If, yes. That's a great picture.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Andy Heath, the city's finance director. What I'd like to do for you tonight is briefly go through the proposed budget right before we do a public hearing, just kind of give you an idea of where we actually ended up the fiscal year. We are asking that the council do consider opening the public hearing to consider the fiscal 1819 budget that starts on July 1st, and then also set the appropriations limit for the coming year as well. As part of tonight's outline for discussion, we'll give you the budget development process to date and some of the things that have been considered by the council over the course of the last three and a half months or so. Review the citywide proposed budget for fiscal 1819 at a very high level, just a synopsis, snapshot. Give you the update to the general fund multi-year forecast. It's come before your council a couple of times over the last three and a half months, and then consider the public hearing and the proposed budget itself. Looking at some of the things that we have done over the course of the budget development process, the 1718 financial activity, that is the current fiscal year that ends in just a couple of days from now, was actually updated and presented to the city council on March 27th. With that process, we introduced how we were going to roll out the budget this year, which includes some of the things that have already been done. Obviously, staff has been working very closely with the department heads in the city to put the budget together since April, pretty much, and we bring this budget before you tonight. On May 8th, we did do a budget development workshop, gave you an overview of the general fund financial forecast for the first time in a public setting, and then went through some budget considerations that we wanted to build into the budget, and then considered some of the additional things that the council did discuss that night. Most of those things are built into this budget. On May 22nd, we gave you a preliminary budget that was approved, so you do have a spending plan for the coming year for 1819. It is a preliminary spending plan, and the only changes that you'll see tonight will be to the major end fund. And that is because on June 12th, we did meet with the major end oversight committee and actually went through the budget with them, and there was one change to some capital for public safety. So a very benign change, but a change nonetheless. That is built into the proposed budget that you're seeing tonight, and then here we are at June 26th. So this has come before your council on several occasions and has been very transparent and public in nature, and a lot of information has gone out there with respect to the budget this year. This is the citywide budget for the coming fiscal year. What this chart shows you is actually where we anticipate ending up the current fiscal year in fiscal 1718. You see revenues and expenditures. For some of the major funds, the general fund and the major end fund are two of the largest funds that comprise most of the discretionary services or core services that the city does provide on a daily basis. We also have the two enterprise funds, that is the sewer fund and the water fund combined into one line there. Other special revenue funds are where you'll find specific types of revenues that are collected for specific types of purposes, things like gas tax or transportation-related revenues are in those special revenue funds. Assessment district funds are the budgets that you just approved, basically, right before this item. And then you also have some trust and agency and internal service funds. And then below the operating funds, I also put the CDBG and home, home loan funds, just because those really aren't operating funds, they're more loaned, loaned funds, and as funds are received back, they're re-loaned out to, to appropriate loan recipients. So for fiscal 1819, you can see from an expenditure perspective, your total budget is about $39.5 million on the operating side. It's about $11 million more than where we anticipate the current year to end up at 28.4. General fund increases a little bit, mostly because you have some capital carryovers in the general fund, CalPERS costs, some negotiated benefits for things like health and salary increases and the such. The major end fund goes up by about $2.3 million, and what you have going on here is the fact that there's a large capital carryover related to the streets project. So we had a $2.5 million street project that was actually in 1718. About a million one or a million three was expended this year, so the balance of that is carrying over and being added to another allocation for fiscal 1819 specifically for the street project. Enterprise funds and the special revenue funds, similar, similarly to the major end fund, increase in their budgets as well because of those capital carryovers. There was a significant amount of capital that you'll see on another slide that's slated for the coming year. A lot of that was budgeted this year because you don't want to have a capital project unbudgeted and then have to come back every time to start that project. So we have those capital project budgets from year to year, what we anticipate doing probably for the next couple of years, built into any given year's budget. So those are some of the major changes that are going on between where we anticipate ending up in 1718 to arrive at the $39.5 million budget that you see for 1819. Speaking of capital projects, you can see that for the coming fiscal year, there's about $17.9 million. Of that $30, $38 million that's budgeted specifically for capital. The general fund has $335,000. Some of that is for a fire breathing apparatus, which is actually a grant, so there's a revenue that's built into that to the extent we receive that grant from FEMA. So that's about $250,000, I believe. And then some just basic outlay that's programmed with every budget in the general fund on an ongoing basis each year for public safety and IT equipment. So these are recurring costs for capital. In the major end fund, the biggest thing there is the fire engine, so we will be purchasing a new fire engine out of the major end fund in the coming year. Capital projects fund, we have street maintenance and road rehabilitation, and this includes the component of the major end funding that actually is going to be used for road projects as well. So the total amount that's going towards roads citywide, including the major end money, is about $4.2 million. New project there, Peabody Creek Restoration, and then you can see the northeast sidewalk project and the Condon Park accessibility are also part of that capital projects fund. In the special projects fund, we have parking lot reconstruction, or construction, a city entrance sign, and then a broadband study to look at how the city might be able to deliver broadband, consistent with some of the things we discussed at the previous workshop a month ago. In the water and sewer funds, just the recurring projects that go on with water and sewer to make sure that we maintain very efficient systems for both of those enterprises, and that we maintain compliance with the permits that govern both of those enterprises as well. So about $17.9 million in capital and outlay for the coming fiscal year. Looking at citywide staffing for fiscal 1819, you can see that the city does have 93.75 FTE, which are full-time equivalents, about 90, almost 94 people, 94 people, one of them's part-time, that are in the city workforce for the coming year. Couple of these positions are vacant, but they will likely be filled. During 1819, we actually added a building official, and these, these positions have been added for the entire year. So some of these positions, in fact, most of them were added in fiscal 1718. We're just filling them now, where they were just recently filled, but they are added as part of the 1819 total budget. The building official, we have a community service officer that's being paid for by the major end fund. We also have a police officer that's being paid for by the major end fund, and then a school resource officer that is actually on right now in the police department as well. You have some contracted positions that aren't part of this mix, that make up part of the workforce in the city. You have a finance director who is contracted by the city. Also, we contract information technology and operations out as well, and then dispatching services with Nevada County Sheriff's Office. The major end fund for the coming fiscal year funds 12.2 positions. That's up two positions from last year. It's paying for the CSO and that additional police officer. And then the water and sewer fund, 11 positions directly, so they're, the entire 11 positions are paid for by those funds. And then there's also a budgeted transfer of about 4.48 full-time equivalents for administrative related staff, public works related staff that aren't wholly allocated to the water and sewer funds, but do spend some time on those funds, activities. These are the reserve levels, so assuming that all of the budgets that are before you tonight come to full fruition, all the revenues are received, not a penny more or less, and all the expenditures are incurred, not a penny more or less, these are what your reserves are likely to be at the end of the year. In the general fund, you can see that you've got some designated and undesignated reserves, and you also have those in the water and sewer fund. For the general fund, the designated reserves make up about $1.9 million, just under $2 million. You may recall that when we did the budget presentation last month with the preliminary budget, we talked about increasing the pension reserve by about $500,000 in the general fund. So one point, the pension reserve is actually at 1.75 million now. We added the 500,000 in the general fund, but we also added 75,000 from the water fund and 175,000 from the sewer fund, recognizing that, consistent with the slide that was just presented, you have 11 positions that have historically been paid for by those funds and will continue to be paid for by those funds. So of that 1.9 million in the general fund, 1.5 of that is related to the pension reserve, and then you have some other designated reserves as well. The undesignated reserve in the general fund is about $5.8 million, and that represents just under 49% of your entire expenditure budget, base budget, for, for the fiscal year that's, that's being considered tonight. It's a very prudent level. Anything over about 30% for a city this size is a prudent level. However, with some of the volatility that's anticipated, especially with pensions moving forward, it's good to have that in advance, just in case something comes up. The designated reserves in the water and sewer funds also include a working capital, emergency, and connection fee reserve, so you're very well stratified there with 1.9 million in the water fund and 5.2 million in sewer fund, and these are just the designated reserves. So you also have undesignated reserves that you use for things like capital projects. And then undesignated reserves in all the other funds, that gas tax, traffic safety, the special revenue type funds, again, those can only be used for specific purposes, but they can be used for any specific purpose that's governed by that fund. Moving on to the general fund financial forecast, the general fund financial forecast is put together for the next seven years, so it goes out to fiscal '24, '25. One of the primary drivers for development of this forecast was what you see before you on this slide, which is the upcoming costs that are actually given costs for CalPERS retirement in both this, in this slide, it's the general fund and major end fund, because major end does have a lot of positions in it. have a lot of positions in it. And it's just a discretionary fund that's paid for by the general fund to the extent Major N doesn't exist. What you see here is in the blue bar, blue part of the bar, that's the normal cost. And this is the cost to fund all of the active employees' pensions on an ongoing basis. And then the red bar, the red portion of the bar, is actually the unfunded liability component, or the amount that is not currently funded but will be required to be funded over an amortized period of time. In this case, right now, 20 to 30 years, depending on what is being amortized. Those costs, as you can see, in 1819, for the Major N Fund and the general fund will be about $1.5 million. By '24, '25, those costs will be about $2.5 million, about $1 million more. All of these costs are built into the financial model that we've prepared. And being able to address this issue on an ongoing basis is going to be paramount to the fiscal success and wherewithal of the city. You can rest assured that staff will be keeping an eye on pension costs moving forward. We do anticipate that the CalPERS actuaries will be, for the coming year, will be available in a couple of months, in August. When those do become available, we will be bringing that back to the council with an updated forecast so that you can see exactly what is transpiring, recognizing that CalPERS is lowering their discount rate over the next couple of years from 7.5% to 7%. And also, they will be amortizing prospective gains and losses and changes in assumptions over a 20-year period as opposed to a 30-year period. So that will have an impact on the future of the unfunded liability as well. Staff will be bringing back to your council with the next council meeting in July, the first council meeting in July, an update on CalPERS and just a workshop and some options to consider. And just give you a lot more information on this unfunded liability situation and exactly what's going on at CalPERS. And that will be forthcoming to the city council at the next meeting. Again, those costs are built into what is the forecast for the general fund. So this is your multi-year general fund forecast. You can see that in fiscal 1718, with the updates that were done in March, and then again with the preliminary budget, we anticipate that there'll be a surplus of about $208,000. This $208,000 exists primarily because you have capital projects that weren't started that will likely carry over into the next year, which is why you see a use of fund balance in the current fiscal year of about $340,000. So, we will be using the majority, actually all of that $208,000 in the current fiscal year, plus a little bit more because we have some capital things in there that, for which designated reserves were set aside to do. So, that 340 is not a core use of any undesignated fund balance. It's more a use of carryover fund balance from the previous year and designated fund balance that has been set aside for a specific purpose. You can see in the out-years from 1920 to '24, '25, you have surpluses ranging from $62,000 to about $309,000. When you're talking about a 12 or $13 million budget, this isn't a whole lot, but it is nice to see black numbers as opposed to red numbers moving forward in the future, especially when you consider that these costs are built in for the purse situation. So again, this is only as good as the day it's printed on. So, we will be bringing this back occasionally to the city council in an updated fashion. That completes a very quick overview of the budget. Again, this budget's been presented on numerous occasions. The only change between the last time it was presented and today is that capital change in the Major N Fund. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have with respect to the budget itself.
Any questions of Andy?
Thank you.
You're good. I think this is, has been an extraordinary process in the way you've presented and the flexibility and the projections that we were able to go through two, two and a half months ago or so, and looking at the liabilities as well as changes in fluctuations in the economy. And it's a very dynamic program. So, I want to thank you for all the work you've done and trying to explain it to us. And we're so pleased and fortunate that we have your professional eye that looks at this. Thank you. This is a notice public hearing. So, are we going to do both the public hearings at the same time on the, why don't we do the presentation?
I can do the, I have a quick presentation on the GAN limit. So, the GAN limit is something that's required every year. It sets the amount that the, that the organization, every organization that receives taxes can spend in any given year. The GAN limit is updated every year consistent with the change in the price index in the state of California, which was about 3.67% last year. And then that's multiplied by the change in population in Nevada County. You can take the change in population in the county or the city, whichever is higher. The change in Nevada County's population was 0.55%. When you combine both of those two percentages into one ratio, and you apply it to last year's appropriation limit, you get a new appropriation limit of about $22.2 million, the amount that's noted in the staff report. I will tell you that the only, the amount that's subject to the limit in the coming year is about $14 million. So there's plenty of room in the GAN limit to continue to do what we're doing.
There usually is with our budget, so. Any questions regarding the GANN limit?
No.
G-A-N-N?
Yes.
Okay, this is a notice public hearing, and both items are open to public comment. If anybody has any comment or questions, please.
I have a question. Matthew Coulter. What is the City of Grass Valley preparing to do about warming shelter for this winter? And where does that fit within the budget?
So, that's a, it's not in the budget, and...
That's what I'm concerned about.
Yeah. We are generally not a program that does health, the health programs for the county, and that comes under county funding. And we will be talking to the county.
So you're prepared for Grass Valley citizens to be on the streets this winter because they're not going to be allowed in Nevada City Shelter? It seems like something we'd want to budget for ahead of time. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Bob Bransstrom, Grass Valley. I loved the PowerPoint presentation. It was not part of the budget item that was available online, and I'm wondering if it would be possible to get this additional information. That'd be great. Thank you.
We're so eager to give her your copy.
It would be good to put it online as well.
We don't like the waste paper up here in Grass Valley. Very frugal.
So, and we'll be putting it online, so it's public. And that's, any other public, so I'll close the public comment and bring it back. Any other comments from, besides accolades and thank yous? I think we're doing pretty good financially and trying to be consistently frugal, but at the same time getting projects done.
I would make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2017-50 establishing the appropriations limit for the City of Grass Valley fiscal year 2018 and 19, and that we adopt Resolution 2018-49 approving the proposed budget for the city and successor agency for the fiscal year.
Second.
You got it.
I'll use.
This would be roll call as well, Christie. Thank you.
Councilmember Aguilar?
Yes.
Councilmember Arbuckle?
Yes.
Councilmember Foyer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Swarthout?
Yes.
Mayor Levine?
Yes, thank you. Okay, thank you very much, Andy. Okay. Item 16 is adoption Resolution 2018-52 approving Grass Valley Downtown Association beer and wine garden within the footprint of the special events. God, you guys come from all over. This is like 3D.
Keep moving around, keep you guessing. So...
Check my peripheral vision.
Mayor Levine, Alex Gamblegard, your chief of police and council. Before you this evening is a resolution, as you may recall from previous presentations, in order to serve or allow a nonprofit, or any organization for that matter, to serve beer and wine within the public right-of-way, we would need to have a resolution from the city council because our municipal code otherwise prohibits public consumption of alcohol. So before you this evening is a resolution, which is a little bit different than what you've seen in the past. So let me just point out a little bit of that. To start, there's been an application by the GVDA through a special event permit with the police department, as well as permitting with the fire department and a limited-term permit with the community development department to operate their special events, namely, in this case, the Thursday night markets for six weeks, six weeks, in downtown Grass Valley on Thursday nights. In years past, they've run successful beer and wine gardens in two different locations over the previous years, on Mill Street, and then more recently down on East Main Street adjacent to City Hall. And that's what they're proposing this year. Those areas are limited entry and exit into the beer and wine garden, where people would know they're entering. Wrist tags or wristbands are utilized for anybody who would be purchasing drink tickets, and they have to stay within the designated area. This is not opening the entire street fair to consumption. In years past, we've done a resolution for every one of the events, for the term and the duration that they want to do the event in this year. Because they've had successful operation of these events and handled them well, this resolution, should it be your desire to adopt it, would allow it to be an open-ended, specific to the GVDA, with discretion of the chief of police, through the special event permitting process, to limit times, locations, and other terms and conditions related to that. So, it all has all the same posting requirements, the permitting requirements through ABC, how they do their locations, their volunteers to ensure that it's not taken outside of the designated area. But it would allow the, at the discretion of the special event permit, the times for serving, and the footprint, and things like that. So, and then also provides the city the ability to rescind at any time or change any operation based on what we want to see. So, this would only go for GVDA events from starting today and into the future. So that concludes my presentation. And Executive Director Marnie Marshall is here if you have any questions of either of us.
Okay, just to confirm that it's in a designated area and it never, a walk-around the whole event?
If somebody was walking outside of that designated area, they would be subject to enforcement pursuant to our regular municipal code.
And my memory is that when I read it, it, the shutdown was at the end of the, end of the event?
The, in the resolution, it would allow the GVDA on these or subsequent events to begin serving at the post, the advertised beginning time and end at the advertised ending time. But in the special event permit, we can limit that. And so, we would, my, the way we intend to do it this year would be in coordination with the GVDA to make sure that they're on the same page, but would be half an hour prior to the end of the event would be the end of any alcohol sales.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's within the discretion of the special event permitting process and the chief.
Okay, that sounds great. Okay, that was my two questions. Okay, anything else? We, any comments?
Just made me thirsty.
Okay, we'll finish that. Okay, this is an administrative item, but we, people are allowed to comment on it if anybody has a comment. Seeing no comments, back to the Ds.
Make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2018-52. Okay.
All in favor?
I'm assuming.
Okay. I don't think we need a roll call, so I think that's unanimous. Okay.
Did everybody say aye?
Yeah.
I think everybody said aye.
They said oi, oi, yeah. Okay. Item number 17, Fire Department Shared Administrative Service Pilot Program. That Council One approved the agreement for shared administrative services, SAS, between the City of Grass Valley Fire Department and the City of Nevada City Fire Department for one-year pilot program. There you are. I see you out of the top of my glasses.
I'm here.
Hi, Chief.
Hi. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. For the record, Mark Butch and your fire chief. So I'm here this evening to provide you information on an exciting opportunity that we have before us, to enter into a pilot program for a shared administrative services between the Grass Valley and Nevada City Fire Departments. Chief Goodspeed was to be here with me this evening for your presentation, however, he's currently assigned to the Creek Fire up in Northern California. He did send us a correspondence, which has been included in your, in your packet. Additionally included in your packet is a letter of support from Nevada County Professional Fire Fighters Association Local 3800, in support of the framework that we're going to go over tonight related to the shared service. Your council packet also included the entire framework plan of operation, of which I'm going to go over some of the, some of the parts of this evening in this, in a brief PowerPoint, and be happy to answer any questions. So again, the shared administrative service would be between the City of Grass Valley and Nevada City Fire Departments. The shared service is to eliminate duplication, build efficiencies in our systems, maintain some fiscal prudence, allow us to plan for the future vision of our agencies and the sustainability of our fire agencies moving into the future. It's a cost containment for administration while providing full-time representation for both agencies. And then we will focus on the challenges and the complexities of the increasing roles and responsibilities expected of today's modern professional fire department and service to our communities. The benefits of a shared service. This complements the joint operational area model that's currently in place between ourselves, Nevada City and Nevada County Consolidated Fire District. It streamlines communications, puts two chief officers talking to each other instead of three chief officers talking to each other, allows us to do some workshare projects with our partner agencies as well, provides us additional oversight and again, representation on a full-time basis for both cities. We get increased administrative support for both agencies. We have some fire prevention and life safety and other program management opportunities that are available to us. And we, we increase the operational integrity for better service between the two cities. Why now? In 2014, the shared service model was explored among the three JOA agencies. Unfortunately, that concept in 2014 was ahead of its time. We never lost sight of those benefits of the shared service. We lost some time, but not our direction. Our opportunity, management, and leaderships kind of all come into alignment for us right now and providing us this opportunity that we're pretty excited to have. Both cities have, share a lot of similarities. We both have well and urban interface, or what's referred to as WUI, within the cities and/or on the perimeters of the cities. Both have historic old town areas, return-to-century construction, major transportation corridors that run through our cities, and increased calls for service. We both have slight governance with the council city manager. And as, as another item, the Grass Valley Police and Nevada City Police Department have been in a, an agreement for some time now for a detective patrol officer during certain work hours. And in fact, we'll have a presentation for you later on another topic to share him some services. So the framework's pretty simplistic. We're proposing a one-year pilot program between the two agencies. Chief Goodspeed, who's currently a part-time fire chief for the City of Nevada City, is also a fire captain on one of their fire engines, will come off the fire engine and become a division chief. He and I will share administrative responsibilities for both agencies. In replacement of Chief Goodspeed, we will loan the Nevada City Fire Department one staff member from our agency for the term of the pilot program. All personnel remain employees of their respective cities. There's no change of employment. There's no change of identity or any of those things. We feel as though this is a, this is a great opportunity to explore the theory of the shared service and have a real-world application of it and benefit both agencies as we do so. So I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions of Chief?
Are you going to open the public?
Yeah. So, let me, this is the report by Chief Butch. If anybody has any questions from the public, please come forward now, and we'll try and address those as well during this conversation.
Bill Neville, Grass Valley, Resumé.
Sorry?
William Neville.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
First, let me say I have great confidence in our fire department in general and the administration of the fire department in particular. I have some background in that. I've been in the business for about 60 years. And so, I don't come here without thinking about it a little bit. What I couldn't find out in the proposal, as listed in the newspaper and even in the, in the presentation we just saw, is specifically, what does this do? I can see what it does... I can see what it does for Nevada City. I can't quite see what it does for the residents, taxpayers of Grass Valley. And I'm not saying it doesn't, I just don't understand what it is.
So, we're, we'll take that, we'll answer, in due course after, okay? Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Katrina Olson, City of Nevada City. I'd like to commend Chief Butron and Chief Goodspeed for working, working together to find shared service opportunities that create efficiencies for both joint agencies. Thank you.
Thanks, Katrina. Okay, nobody else coming down? I'll close the comment period. Chief, if you address that, and if any of the council members wish to ask the chief any questions, please feel free to ask, you know, raise your hand, and we'll get your, get your questions going, okay?
Absolutely. So the, the shared service is going to provide us an additional administrative person to assist with the needs of the city. There's many complexities that are not seen by the average person in the public and administration of a fire department. Chief Goodspeed will help fill out those roles. Additionally, his roles will also tran, excuse me, transcend over and, and stay in Nevada City with many of the same topics. And these are things like fire prevention, community, community activities, things of that nature, that we, we hope to be able to better expand upon with the shared service model. The loaning of the one firefighter, or one fire captain in this instance to the, to the Nevada City Fire Department is actually a, an opportunity for one of our individuals to step up from a position that they have tested for, and will fill that position and allow us to, to essentially have them earn some responsibility before they actually promote into a full-time position pending some, some staffing changes that we see coming in the
In regards to the question from, how about tactical, tactical response? Does that improve our tactical response in any way when we do our mutual aids and the Grass Valley Nevada City organizations working together?
Right. So what happens right now in, in the joint operational area, which includes our three agencies, is that we operate what's called, under what's called a boundary drop, or closest resource dispatching. So the fire apparatus that comes to your residence is the closest one to you at any given time in the day that happens to be. It just so happens that for the majority of incidences such as a structure fire, and the city's probably the best example I can give you, the majority of the time, you'll have three city engines, R2 in Nevada Cities and one county apparatus. We service a large area of the county that's around both cities, and that holds true there too as well. We will, you know, we, we send our engines into those areas on a routine basis. So tactically, no, it doesn't change anything that we're doing, doesn't change any of the joint operational area dynamics that are currently in place, changes none of that. It simply provides both agencies with more oversight, more administration, some opportunities for our younger staff members, and a vision for us to go move forward into the future is what we're after.
Okay.
So, we've been talking about this for a really long time, since, so, we've been here before, little different structure this time, but I think also one of the benefits, if not mistaken, is that it also puts Grass Valley and Nevada City on the same page for training, so that when you are working alongside a Nevada City firefighter, that both of you have the same training and the same, the same experiences and the same equipment standards, which makes for better safety for the public, better safety for our firefighters. Is that, would that not also be a benefit of this agreement?
Absolutely. The crews train daily now together, under, under our current program. Some of the efficiencies that you'll see built into the system here is, is, and the best sample I give you is a fire engine. Nevada City's currently specking a fire engine that is the same specification as ours. Now, that may not seem like a huge thing to probably the majority of persons listening or watching this, however, when, you know, when you're looking to build efficiencies into an operation where, you know, literally seconds count, that's a, that's a significant issue for us. So yes, those, that training will continue. I anticipate greater integration of the two cities, in terms of policies and procedures of the fire department, the opportunities for the individuals, the, the, just the, the absolute kind of, of seamless integration that we've, you know, we've been attempting for so long, and this has provided us now the opportunity because all these things have come back into alignment for us.
Yeah, I think, again, this has been a long time coming, lots of discussions with all of the agencies here locally, three agencies, kind of one general community. I think it's, it's an excellent start. I do agree with Mr. Neville in the sense that we might not be seeing instant gratification when it comes down to maybe cost savings, we're not seeing instant gratification in, in the level of response and service, but we have to start somewhere, and I think this is a great first step to where hopefully when you start talking about that vision, as the two marry, if you will, seeing greater opportunities there for those things such as cost savings, that I think our taxpayer, taxpayers wants. And I also think our taxpayers have been demanding some sort of conversation, some sort of consolidation between the departments for a really long time. So regardless of the, the pie in the sky dreams of what one agency can do, the initial first step has to happen somewhere, and I think what's nice is to actually have a cordial conversation between two cities and two chiefs, and actually get something done when it comes down to fire, so kudos to you.
Thank you.
Decided table, any comments, questions? Okay. So, we're looking at recommendation, so I would ask for a motion to approve the agreement for shared, okay, so moved? Second? Second? Right here? Jason?
His voice got real deep.
Okay, all, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you very much for the effort, and thanks to Sam and Katrina and both departments for putting their heads together and their shoulders to the grindstone. Thank you. Item eighteen, introduction of a new city ordinance amending chapter nine point one oh of Title Nine of the City of Grass Valley Municipal Code, allowing massage establishment hours of operation between seven AM and nine PM, which is a slight change. Thank you.
Yes, Mayor Levine, council members, Steve Johnson, police captain. Brief report and a little bit of history just to set the stage. On March eighth, twenty sixteen, council approved what, at the time, was a brand-new ordinance, allowing and enabling the police department to regulate massage establishments within the city limits. Prior to that, we did not have an ordinance of that kind, and it was mainly passed to address a phenomenon that we had seen arising, and that was that as primarily larger cities down the hill began to adopt ordinances and regulating their massage establishments, we saw some owned by people from outside of our region opening establishments up here, and some of them were very problematic for us. We received numerous calls for service and complaints, and our belief was that they were primarily fronts for criminal activity and, at very least, questionable massage practices. And so that resolution, or the ordinance was adopted, and I'm happy to report that it, by all measures, it's been very successful and a tremendous tool for the police department over the last couple of years. Anecdotally, there were two massage establishments that were in particular a source of our attention, and generated lots of calls for service and lots of complaints in our community. And the ordinance itself, one of those establishments, both of them were owned by people from outside of the area. One of them was never able to come into compliance with the ordinance from the very beginning, and primarily due to certifications for their massage therapists. They not only weren't in compliance with the state regulations, but they didn't have certifications of any kind, and so when we could require that and enforce that, they could not come into compliance, and they chose to close their doors and went out of business prior to even becoming certified. The other establishment, over the following year, after it was adopted, either would not or could not maintain compliance with the requirements of the ordinance, and these are just basic sanitary, common sense-type regulations, as well as certifications for, appropriate certifications for the therapists. And so when they could no longer comply, the ordinance gave us the authority and the ability to perform inspections, and to hold them accountable, and likewise, that establishment also eventually ended up closing its doors and is no longer in operation. I'm happy to report that the remaining establishments in the city are in compliance with the ordinance, have been so for quite some time, and although over the, you know, the adoption in the early years of the ordinance, there was confusion at times, and some, trying to understand exactly how the ordinance applied, at every turn when we've approached the current establishments in the city, they've been extremely responsive, and eager to comply. So we are very pleased with that. Over the last year, and the reason we're here tonight, the police department, and me in particular, I've had requests from the owners of at least three of the most prominent massage establishments, establishments in the city, asking if there was a way that we, they could extend the allowable hours. The current ordinance restricts operations from between seven AM and seven PM. And prior to the ordinance, these establishments had typically been open to nine-thirty, ten o'clock in the evening. So they asked if they, if they could extend it, and initially, I didn't understand the need for that, but I did receive dozens of letters from community members, as well as numerous phone calls of people expressing why they would like to see that change as well. And the most common story is they described to me that they leave work five or six PM, they like to go home and have dinner with a family or a loved one, and then they enjoy coming back in the evening to get a massage because it helps them sleep at night. And when the massage establishments had to close doors and cease all operations at seven PM, that did not leave them enough time to do that. So, because of the request from the establishments and their owners, and from numerous community members, we are bringing a proposal to council tonight, and at this point, the proposal recommends extending the allowable hours by two hours, so from seven AM to nine PM. But ultimately, that'll be up to council to decide on that, but that's what's proposed at this point. And with that, I'll return it to council for any questions.
And let me open it up to some public comment, or anybody here for public comment on this item, or shall we just discuss it at council? Anybody public comment on this item? Okay. If not, close the public comment. I, I've had some public people ask as well, because they seem to not be able to get there, and we've had testimony at city council meetings as well, so I think this is a reasonable proposal. Anybody have any other comments?
I think it's a reasonable proposal also. We kind of set that time limit, and now I think it's appropriate to make that change, seeing the outcry, and especially the benefit to the people, especially since those businesses are in compliance and will continue to be in compliance, so.
I just have one question on, it says, "A massage begun anytime before seven PM must be terminated at seven PM."
Yes, that's, what it's speaking to is, operations, any massage activity needs to stop at seven PM. So if it's begun before seven regardless, in other words, they can't close the doors at seven and continue an hour-long massage till eight PM at this point. And so we're just adjusting that entire language to nine PM. So, so there couldn't be any massage activity going on past nine PM in the new proposed It's a little wordy, yeah.
A quick question. The nine o'clock deadline, was that the requested number? Was that the, you mean, we had to come up, I understand we've got to come up with a number, but how did we come up with nine instead of ten?
You know, in speaking with the owners, there was, you know, they, they, again, told us that they, prior to the ordinance, stayed open till ten, nine-thirty-ish, those, those type of hours, and so in all honesty, we figured extending a couple hours was reasonable. And we do also want to create a buffer between, you know, the downtown area and some of the bar activity, and when that closes, and, and not running those too close together. But nine PM was, in discussing with some of the owners, kind of where we came to an
Be looking for a motion, if you're okay with that, and this is a first reading by title only, and new city ordinance amending chapter nine point one oh of Title Nine of the Grass Valley Municipal Code. Anybody make them?
Motion that we introduce for the first reading, read by title only, a new city ordinance amending chapter nine dash, or nine dot ten of Title Nine of the Grass Valley Municipal Code, allowing hours of operation between seven AM and nine PM.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous? Thank you very much, Stephen, Captain. Okay, item nineteen, acceptance of Nevada City Police Department. Oh, I'm sorry, the dog is doing the presentation, isn't it? Moving over, going, ruff, ruff, ruff.
Do you have, at least have a picture?
Canine, rutiger, and associated equipment for ownership and used by Grass Valley Police Department. Is there a PowerPoint?
Picture, but no PowerPoint. So, you have to wait and see.
How can we take him? Is he as cute as our dog? I mean, is he as friendly? Is he going to jump in my lap?
He's cute, yeah.
We don't get to kick the tires or anything.
We'll see. See if he shows up.
So, some of us believe age has its own beauty, so we know this dog's a little bit older, yeah.
Absolutely.
More experienced, Howard. More experienced.
You don't need to even do a presentation here, I know.
Sorry.
I'm just smiling.
So on that note, Mayor, Council, Alex Gamblegard, your chief of police, Lieutenant Chad Ellis from Nevada City. I'll run through just a little bit of the information you have in your council packet. This chair is incredibly low.
I know, there must have been short people all over the.
So, essentially, as, as you know, a few months back, we brought to your council the adoption and final approval of our initiation, initiation of a canine program at Grass Valley Police Department, which included introducing Cano, and Officer Butler as handler to your council, and we, at that point, were fully operational with our approximate year-long process of developing the policy procedures, protocols, acquisition of the dog, equipment, selecting of the handler, the sixth week, post-certification training, and then ultimately rolling Officer Butler and Cano out onto the street. To date, they've been very successful in some of their patrol operations. Cano is incredibly wonderful with, with people, and also in his patrol duties. But tonight's discussion is about bringing a new canine team member into our Grass Valley Police Department canine program, specifically bringing Rutiger over from Nevada City Police Department, and really, the reason behind this is that Rutiger's handler has accepted employment with another agency outside of the county of Nevada. And as you probably recall, Rutiger was purchased through community funding efforts, specifically with efforts primarily from the Rutiger Foundation, and also some of the equipment through the Nevada County Law Enforcement Fire Protection Council. And as such, it's important to, to the people in our community and from those who made the donations to make Rutiger possible, that he continues to doing the work he's so good at here in Western Nevada County, namely in Grass Valley, where we have now, albeit new, a, an established canine program. Rutiger is a four-year-old German Shepherd, so he's their traditional brown-and-black-looking shepherd.
Cuter.
Cuter. He's also incredibly good with people, from a socialization standpoint, but also is trained in the same type of canine training such as suspect apprehension and tracking, as well as narcotics detection. So when we realized that this was reality, when Lieutenant Ellis came to me and talked to me about it. to me about this, this potential for them and them not feeling that they had adequate staff at this time to continue the canine program in the fashion that it has been, you know, we talked about options for Ruderger, and it seems to be a wonderful fit for him to come work out of our building, but still provide the same services that he provides in Nevada City. And as you're probably aware, canine programs, canine officers in general, are kind of a mutual aid resource. They go where they're needed based on the type of call. And much like with Cano, our objective would be that Ruderger and Cano would be available to our allied agencies as needed. And we would then, with two canines on staff, work our schedules so that we have as much coverage as possible with overlapping training for them to stay with their two trainings per month, 16 hours a month of post-certification training. So with that, I'll let Lieutenant Ellis give you any other background or history.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to sit before you tonight. It came as a shock when we learned that we were going to lose our handler for the department. Ruderger is a phenomenal asset to not only Nevada City Police, but to all local communities. During his tenure with us, he would hop borders into Grass Valley and assist officers here and into the county as needed. So we were in a dilemma. So we have fewer officers, obviously, than Grass Valley at this point in time. Some of the senior officers, it's not an ambition of theirs to be canine handlers. We have some younger officers that are a year to two years in that aren't in a position right now to do a specialty assignment such as canine. They'd be better off focusing on patrol functions first. So I think Nevada City as a whole, we're about a year and a half to two years out of looking into getting another dog and continuing the program. The close working relationship with Nevada City PD and Grass Valley led to the discussion on how can we best keep Ruderger as an asset to all local law enforcement? And we were able to come up with the idea of having Ruderger come over to Grass Valley along with the vehicle that he is associated with and equipment. So I think it would be a good asset for all local law enforcement.
So essentially, before you this evening, is a resolution that would allow signature authority for the city manager to sign for the attached draft transfers, which is the disposition of the property between the agencies. But you guys are mostly focused on Cano, so.
We want to know what he thinks. Could you bring him up here for? I mean, he's, does he want another canine?
There was some discussion, Officer Butler, about which dog is cuter. We didn't get into the handler portion of that, but.
Canot.
Just put him on the table for us. Yeah.
So.
Get your picture in the front page of the paper tomorrow.
So they get a lot? They don't get on the table in Nevada City, I'm just saying.
Yeah, ours is more training.
Yeah. And the two dogs have spent, the handlers and canines have spent time training together through their training group, and that would then continue as well.
So who, do you have somebody already assigned to Grass Valley who's going to be the handler?
We have the position posted, and we'll go through the same selection process that we did here. The dynamics are a little bit different with Ruderger, mostly for a new handler coming in, all the same certifications have to be redone because it's a team approach. So even though Ruderger could go tomorrow with his current handler, or probably with a trained handler, and pass all the certifications, it's a team approach. So they both have to go to that six-week certification training and be certified as a team on the post areas that they'll be certified in. And then additionally, in some of the, there's a little bit different level of interest within our organization to be, Ruderger's handler specifically, because he's a little bit older. So people looking at their careers and where those different timeframes line up, he probably doesn't have as long of a working life left in him compared to Cano. He's four.
Now, Ruderger has a drink named after him at the Golden Era. Is that still going to stay?
As far as I know, that is. Absolutely.
And when they do the fundraisers there, does Ruderger go to the event?
Yeah, he has been present. So, and that's, that's part of the issue. I mean, we have the Ruderger Foundation, which is obviously keeping the namesake in the community. The foundation was also instrumental in assisting with Cano's purchase. So it's just keeping that as a local asset for all of us is phenomenal.
Bar that will name a drink after you.
Some bar should be really excited about doing that.
That's half caffeine. So we need to go to the coffee bar.
What does he think about the idea? What does Cano think?
He's fart, yeah. Is there a police cat?
No, there's no police cat.
Yeah, gee, don't mention cats.
Are we getting, police cat?
That's actually Fire Chief Butron's latest. You'll see that one coming soon.
Oh, we'll have a fire cat.
Fire cat.
Okay. And I have just one, so is that, is their unit a Tahoe or is it a Ford?
It's a 2016 Chevrolet Tahoe.
Okay.
So with the exception of having to change graphics, they'll look very similar.
Do they get the same treats? Or do we have better treats?
Who knows?
Yeah, okay.
They have treats and we have lazy dog, so.
Oh, well, sorry.
Well, all seriousness, I'd like to say thank you to Nevada City. I think this is a good opportunity. And thank you to all the Nevada City, you know, citizens that have, you know, given their, their time and their energy. And the Ruderger Foundation for starting it, and that kind of kicked it off for Grass Valley as well and got us going down that direction. So I think we're honored to have Ruderger and, you know, I, it's part of your guys' family over there too, so I couldn't imagine, you know, getting rid of that, that part of your family. So I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
There'll be visitations.
And Chief, this totally goes towards your goal of an all canine force.
Yeah, everybody.
So with that, let me ask you to make a resolution. Oh, public comment? Sure. Got carried away, I was looking for dog treats.
Bob Branstrom from Grass Valley, still. I love dogs. I love working dogs. I love police dogs, and I'm sure I'd love Ruderger if I got to know him. But the proposal, as I read it, had a number of unanswered questions that I think need to be addressed. First of all, Grass Valley already has its own canine, Cano, I believe is the name. So it's not clear to me that we actually need another dog. And because this will be used for mutual aid, that may be part of the issue. But there will be costs associated with training new staff members to work with the dog. You have to have specialized handlers. So my question really is, is this passing the buck or cost shifting from Nevada City to Grass Valley? Or will Nevada City help with training a new staff person with this? I really hate to see Grass Valley getting all the cost of this dumped on the city since the original arrangement to get Ruderger actually came from the initiative of Nevada City. So I would like to see them sharing the cost of training new staff.
Yeah, absolutely. So there's two training cost components, the first being the initial, that six-week component that I'm talking about. And then there's the ongoing costs. So we have commitment to transfer from the Ruderger Foundation, the same commitment they had with Nevada City as with us, where they pay directly the training costs on the ongoing basis. As to the initial costs, I haven't had that discussion yet. But as it relates to the Grass Valley Police Department's training budget and the personnel development and asset that it, well, starting with the personnel side, the personnel development that we get by exposing officers to that experience, the cost is de minimis as it relates to our annual training budget. We're talking between $1,000 and $2,000 for that six weeks' worth of training, which is pretty small as it relates to our annual, our training requirements within any police department for ongoing training. So, so there's that. And then I think your other component was.
Well, you raised the question of the ongoing costs, which.
Right, which we have, we have the commitment to be covered directly.
Okay. I think you had a question on the actual need for a secondary dog. And I think just historically, as we look at it, as the police departments, Officer Butler and Cano do not work seven days a week. So it then would give Grass Valley the ability to do scheduling where they would have a dog here seven days a week as opposed to maybe four hours or four days a week.
Three or four, yeah.
So you could have coverage seven days a week. Were they available for overtime pay or?
The handlers.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks for the questions. We weren't too concerned. With that, oh, I'm sorry.
Air Council Members, Katrina Olson, City Manager, Nevada City. I'd like to thank Grass Valley Police Department and Chief Gamelgard, and working with Nevada City Police Department and Lieutenant Ellis with the support of the Ruderger Foundation, and creating a solution to provide a handler and a smooth transition for canine Officer Ruderger with the loss of the current handler to a new handler with Grass Valley. Nevada City Council will hear this matter tomorrow night's council meeting as well as the shared fire services, I forgot to mention that before. And is, just adding a little bit to the previous question asked, the canine, Ruderger Foundation was very supportive in providing funding on a quarterly basis to assist in the additional costs for the canine program.
Thank you for being here. And do you have a question?
I just have a quick question. What would happen to Ruderger if we did not do this? Would he go to outside the community or what?
Yeah, potential, there's different options. He could be sold to outside the community. Obviously, as Nevada City PD, we don't have the ability right now without the absence of a handler. Oftentimes, the training groups are looking for dogs to place with other agencies, which would take him outside the community, which would not be a good thing, obviously. Another option is, you know, the handler leaving Nevada City would purchase Ruderger and take him with. The issue with that is he's going to be starting a new career at a different police department, and oftentimes, they won't allow that individual to come in already as a handler. The department he's going to does not currently have a canine program. So that would take service life off the dog. Ruderger is highly trained, there's a lot of money and effort that has gone into where he's at now, and to lose several years of that would be a shame.
Think of him as a Nevada City dog, but he really has truly been a community asset. And I think it's one of the things that maybe spurred us a little bit into, into doing the canine program as well.
Absolutely. We learned a lot about the canine program and doing Cano and that whole program, and it just seems to be hand in glove.
I'd say it makes sense to have the dog avail, a canine available seven days a week as opposed to three or four, or if something serious happened, have to call Evan in on overtime. This, this would provide, I think that would work even better with your.
Absolutely.
I'm really happy that we were able to work it out, and I know that Ruderger will be visiting often.
Matthew stood up and had a comment or question.
Matthew Coulter. My first question is, in the vehicles that the dogs are transported in, is there redundant systems for heat alarms?
Got it.
Because it seems like it's a rash of actually police service dogs being killed across the U.S., being left in hot cars, which is amazing to me. It's great, awesome. Super Dog Day, Sammy's got their contract today for the shelter, and we get another dog, so it's a very good Dog Day. Because I know that like up on Cypress Hill, there was a problem, and you had to wait for a dog to come all the way from South Sack, so that means all the officers have to wait and secure the building until the dog comes up and secures it. So that costs a lot of money. So I think the dog is a great force multiplier. And yeah, I would love to see him a demo at the Thursday Night Market sometime. Thank you.
So in, to answer Mr. Coulter's first question about, yeah, the tragic accidental deaths that have occurred across the United States that we hear about, usually that's a malfunction of first, the vehicle's air conditioning system, and second, remote door pop, if any, and third, the alarming system. So we have, so I'll get to answering your primary question. First and foremost, the vehicles that both of these canines are in are new, low-mileage vehicles, the likelihood of air conditioning failure is lower. So that's a good thing, but there are systems in place. And currently, because of, we've had these discussions internally, adding a redundant system on top of the already very reliable system in a new car. So Officer Butler can monitor his vehicle's temperature from right here. But we're looking at adding a secondary system specifically so that if that one were to fail, we would, so this one is radio frequency, communication, point-to-point from his device to his vehicle. We're looking at adding a secondary system that would be LTE wireless on the in-car vehicle modems so that it could alert to his cell phone via text message. So if there was a, if that one wasn't, he would also be getting notifications. So we would have two notification systems running simultaneously. And as part of every pre-check patrol duty, you're checking the system. Is that accurate?
So before we make any motions, I just want to thank Chad, you being here, and Katrina, and we appreciate your time and coming over. So thank you. Thanks for the presentation, motion?
So I'll make the motion to approve. Of course I would. The transfer of Nevada City Police Department canine Ruderger equipped vehicle and associated canine equipment to the Grass Valley Police Department, and to transfer one Grass Valley Police Department patrol vehicle to the Nevada City Police Department, and approve the attached resolution 2018-56, authorizing the city manager to sign for the transfers in the attached agreement.
I will be happy to second that.
On favor? Aye? Opposed? None? Okay.
We will see him at our next council meeting, right?
Yeah, we need to.
Or maybe Thursday night, he might come for a walk. Yeah, he can't?
Oh, yeah, you can't have dog, you can't bring.
He's a service dog.
He's a service dog. The reason we can't do it is because you will be in.
I'm not going to be there.
No, because. Can't do it. So the next is reports from council, but before I ask you to do a report, I want to make a little announcement about Thursday Night Market. Thank you all for coming that early evening right now, but Thursday Night Market is this Thursday night, June 28th, and it starts, I believe, is it 5:30 or 6? Six? This is 125th year of the city of Grass Valley, and behind me is, March 13th is our anniversary of our 125th year. But it's much better to do a party when there are a lot of people outside. So I have a couple of anniversary cakes for Thursday Night Market that I'm inviting people to come out and have cake. So I just wanted to announce that, and we will have our birthday cake for the 125th anniversary of the city of Grass Valley Thursday night. And you won't be here, I'll save you a piece.
In front of the clock tower.
In front of the clock tower. I'll be there at 6:00. I'm going to be there early.
What kind of cake?
Pardon me. It's a chocolate cake, and I think it has buttercream frosting, and then it has a filler. I can't remember. It has the city seal on both of them. One's a vanilla, one's a chocolate. They both have white with the seal and gold trim, so.
So send me a picture.
I'll save you cake.
I'll save you a piece.
Yeah. So any reports from council members?
I don't have much, but I just, I did attend one, one event. I did attend former Mayor De Martino, former first woman mayor's funeral services a couple weeks ago. And, you know, I think for all this, that new Dee, she was never afraid to challenge you. And sometimes her challenging might have just even been telling you off a little bit. And it was nice to have that at her service, they had that kind of tone to it, and the fact that they all knew who Dee was, and it was, it was very nice. And I wish the chief was here, but you can pass this on to me, because former Chief Mel Hauser sang at Dee's service, and I didn't know that the chief is required to come to former mayor's services and sing. So would you please pass that on to the chief? Because I think it's, I think it's a good tradition to start.
He was in choir in high school.
He was in choir, yeah. There we go.
He's all set up.
So, yeah, we had former Police Chief Mel Hauser sing. So for those, Mel Hauser, yeah, Mel Hauser. For those of you that were here, it was during his time too, it was kind of going back in time.
Would that be the first mayor's funeral that he would go to? Because I'd be, I'm the oldest, I'm assuming I'm the oldest person that our chief would go to.
Most experienced.
Not oldest.
Lisa?
I went to the NCC, Nevada County Leadership Institute, had their graduation on Friday. And I was not the oldest person there, but I was the oldest class there from, I went through the Leadership Institute in 1999, and Allison was there, Allison Lehman was there, and she's like, "You broke my record." She went through in 2001, but a great new group of community leaders kind of spawned out into the community after that. It's a really good program. kind of spawned out into the community after that. It's a really good program. We might think about sending a couple of our employees or if any council people haven't gone through it, it's a, it's a great. Am I the only council person who did it?
I've gone through it. I'm too experienced.
Like an NCC LI?
Yeah, Nevada County Leadership. Yeah, so, um...
Three of the five.
I'm too experienced.
Yeah, she trusts us.
That's more painful.
Jen?
It was more painful.
Oh, you did yours. Jen?
Um, let's see. I, I did some, I did a webinar for the strategic plan for the league. Not a bunch else. Um, I'm leaving tomorrow for the, to sit on a panel on gender empowerment at the executive forum in Monterey and then for the, um, league board meeting. So I'll be gone until Saturday evening sometime.
And you'll miss cake. But what's that?
I'll miss cake.
Ben?
Well, I attended the, well, I toured the Sacramento Recycle Center. With all the talk about China not accepting a lot of the recyclable materials, uh, the Sacramento Recycle Center has really, uh, gone and had to change how they, how they take the recycling and process the recycling. So, I, I sit on the Solid and Hazardous Waste Commission and, uh, I've been recycling incorrectly and putting stuff that shouldn't go in there and one of the, the, the most common, uh, mistakes people make is they recycle clothes and bowling balls. Yeah, things that made plastic.
I do that every week.
Yeah, it's plastic. People automatically, "Oh, I can recycle plastic. It's completely recyclable." Well, it really isn't. So, um, we toured their facility, got to learn about the process and how they handle things, uh, and, uh, got to see it in action. So got to tour it and look at the conveyor belt. So I got some, uh, video that's really fascinating and how much volume they process of just aluminum cans in an eight-hour shift will just blow your mind. So, um, I think we'll have a little bit more discussion and, uh, education on how we can better, uh, educate people on recycling, uh, their materials. Because there is a, a serious problem of buildup of recycling that would have gone to China but is not going to China, so.
Yeah, well, when she said that there's, I think, actually I've never really paid attention to the little square, little triangle with the number in it.
Yeah.
Some of them you can't see.
Well, they take...
They're way too small.
They will only take a certain amount of contaminant into, uh...
3%.
Bundle and it's actually 0.03%. It used to be 10, 15%. Well, what they'll do is they'll crack open a, a bundle of recyclable material and sort it all and weigh all the waste that shouldn't be in there, weigh the material that is okay and average it out. And if it's above that percentage, they'll say no to the whole lot.
So what happens to it then?
Then it's...
It's back to Ben's friend, Yari.
Goes back to, sits there. They're, they're still trying to figure that out.
The bail?
How they can process it, where can it go? We really don't have the ability to process all of that material because we've been sending it away so many years.
Sounds like a new business venture for some major...
Yeah, well, it's, uh, government, if they make the law about recycling, then they need to make a law that the recycling needs to be used. So I, we also, uh, Tim and I, uh, met with Waste Management and talked about our, our program going forward and we should be getting a report back from Waste Management. We had some really constructive conversation, uh, and I think we will, uh, have some, some really, really positive ideas that all of us can work to and it's not just Waste Management's responsibility, it's everybody's responsibility. And the other thing that I'm really excited about, um, is I'm working, uh, with Jamal Walker and, um, to do a, a annual Love Walk event in downtown Grass Valley. I went to the Ride Against Racism, which was a kids' ride against racism that was in Nevada City. And, uh, every time we speak out against, um, not understanding one another and not giving people the ability to just live who they are, uh, we need to speak out and I think it's important for us to come together as a community and have that point of view. So, look forward to that.
Do you have a date for it?
Yeah, but I, well, I have one of two dates. It will be incorporated into the Wild Scenic Film Festival. In January. It's part of the diversity inclusion program that we're working on for that, which I, uh, on the diversity inclusion committee. And, um, so, and it's Martin Luther King's birthday weekend, so it will be Sunday or Monday. We're looking for Sunday afternoon right now, so. So that's what we're looking at right now, but it's not in stone and I'll be talking to people about that. So, keep good thoughts in your hearts about people, people. Okay, with that adjourned.